We will now have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning. It's February 6, 2019. I call this meeting in the order. All three county commissioners are here. It is 10 o'clock. We will now have consents and approvals.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have 20 exonerations for $1,710.46. Vouchers, general county fund, $196,537.77, 911, 630.13. Chestnut Ridge Park, $3,077.678. Mason Dixon Park, $897.69. Assessors valuation, $4,001.69. Purchasing card vouchers, general county fund, $6,700.61 cents for a voucher total of $212,544.67. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, the Mon County Building Commission, Camp Monthly Advisory Board, and Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board. Fiduciary orders for February 6, 2019. We have statement of services for fiduciary commissioners, George Armistead, Lynn Crane, and Cynthia Van Stafford.
Move to approve.
Second. Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Okay, we have introduction of new employees. MJ, come on down with your...
Good morning. I'm MJ Zink from Mon County Youth Services. Back in July, we were approved and budgeted for some new employees. I'm just feeling those. So first, we have, would you stand up? This is Amanda Gribble. She was part of AmeriCorps, and in 2016, she was down south with the kids during the flood. She camped out. They had to make their own food. It's really quite a story and very impressive what she's done with kids. So I think she'll be amazing at the center for a youth crisis worker. And then this is Catherine Murray. She's from New York. She's actually a veterinarian tech, and she's moving from that field to this. I think she'll be a great, she's very nurturing, and she has a background where she's moved a lot. Her parents were Irish immigrants, so I think she also will be a good fit for the center.
Move for approval?
Second. Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Where in New York you're from?
Long Island.
Oh, yeah. My mom was born in Long Island. I'm from Philadelphia.
Oh, nice.
Lawrence?
Uh, no, that's out in Suffolk County. I was in Hyde Park, right by Queens.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Sheriff, come on down. How you doing today?
Good.
It's not snowing.
Well, I'll take rain with 58. There are trees everywhere.
So I wonder if we could close the roads down so we could have a party.
We have two new employees. Starting the first to my right is Tyler Osheski. Thank you. He'll be a full-time process transport officer, starting on February 16th, at a starting salary of $2,557.20 per month. Beside Tyler is Dale Ford, who will be starting on February 16th as a full-time home confinement officer, starting salary $2,405.74 per month.
Sheriff, I just have one question. Are these replacements, or are these...
Yes. These are... Yes, they are replacements.
Move for approval?
Second. Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome. Welcome and thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? That we know of? Okay. At this time, we will have comments from the public. Anybody who would like to speak, feel free to come up to the podium, state your name, your address, and we'd love to hear from you. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
I have more pictures for you.
Okay. I'll pass them. Okay. And if you, make sure you state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Margaret Thatten, 1146 Fort Martin Road, Maysville, West Virginia. I didn't, don't know if you remember, I was here last fall and had a complaint about Cresco hauling coal from the river to Longview. I said our roads would not tolerate it, and as you can see from the pictures, they haven't. They won't tolerate that much traffic, and they would not tolerate that much weight. Our driveways and the roads are crumbling, as you can see. The driveway and fences are filthy, about 10 feet, 12 feet back off the road. We have a gravel road on our park, our driveway. To the main road, it was gravel. Right now, 12 foot back, it's muddy. It's not, it's nothing but black mud. I parked in our driveway and crossed the road to get to get our mail. I wade through mud at the mailbox, and usually it's cross the road and back over, 30 minutes, I mean 30 seconds or so, and I'm done. It took me 15 minutes to cross the road the other day. I had to stand back away from the road and wait for about 15 coal trucks to go by, one after the other. Finally, I got across the road, and again, I had to wait to come back. And as the coal trucks were going by, I was covered with black mud. By the time I got, was able, finally, one gentleman was nice enough to stop his truck and let me cross back over to my car. The photo, you can see from the photos, the many, many trucks on the road. I mean, it is constant. It's not like one truck every minute. It is like 15 trucks, one right after the other, every minute. It's like a caravan, and that's the only, that's the only way I know how to tell it to you. In the one photo that you, that you have there, that you see the big trucks in front of me going down the hill, that was, I was in a line of 15 trucks going down the hill. You can see, I took a picture of every truck that we passed coming up the hill. There are times when the trucks have to come to a stop and let another truck go by, and then they take off, and then they're, they can go again. The, you're so close to the edge of the road, if you go off, you're not going to get back on because the ditch is so deep from where they've had to try to make the road better, which they did not do. There's been at least four wrecks where the trucks ran off the road, and the road has had to be closed until the truck is removed. I've had to sit through two recoveries, which took at least one and a half hours. In one of the stops, a school bus was in front of me. Can you imagine the stress that the families were in waiting for those kids to get home? You can see how filthy the trucks are. Well, one trip down the road, and your clean car looks the same way. We have a power washer at our house, and our car is hosed off prior to entering the garage so that our garage floor does not become like the road. This filth is caused by the trucks from the loading facility and the trucks coming, coming out of LMP Minerals. They have a sweeper that they think cleans the road, but all it does is swirl the dirt around and leaves the dirt on the road.
If, okay, just so you know, if you could kind of finish up, because you get three minutes, but we...
Oh, okay.
If we could help, yeah, and then we will.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that we had three minutes.
That's quite all right.
Uh, they, the trucks start at 4:30 a.m., hitting potholes and using their Jake brakes. In the beginning, the coal was supposed to be brought in by belt. They promised to keep the roads in good condition. That was a promise that nobody got in writing, and so we end up with Longview not doing anything. When they blow off steam, it sounds like a jet in our living room. Now they want to permit to haul coal ash from Fort Martin to LMP Minerals. I could go on, but I'm sure you get the picture. As a community, we would like to know what our rights are. Where do we get assistance when dealing with this? We are part of Mon County also. This would not be tolerated anyplace else in the county. We are looking to our county commissioners to help us solve this problem.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will wait to the councilor's, commissioner's response to try and respond, okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
You want me to go now or...
Yeah.
Sure. That would be great. And then we'll, yes.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm John Hitchens, and the MS Administrator for the Star City Volunteer Fire Department, 3386 University Avenue in Star City. I presented the official funding request. Do you all have copy? I have more copies if you don't have them.
Yeah, we have them. We have them.
You have them, okay. So the official funding request is a follow-up to Director Smith when he was here last week for the Mobile CAD. I know there was some confusion over what CAD stood for in some previous meetings, so I typed that out so we would reduce any confusion over that. We're not designing anything. So this equipment does allow Mecca to view and dispatch units via the GPS system, providing the closest available ambulance response. The gateways per unit, $1,059. The antennas, $255. The mounting hardware includes the mount for the gateway and the mount for the computer. It's $220. Three-year warranty per the unit is $530, and the Zerco mobile license per unit is $1,000. And that's been working in coordination with Monty MS, who's been a great partner throughout this process. So it keeps all of our equipment exactly the same. So if something happens with the equipment, it's the same person who can fix it. It's not, we're not going to have a lot of downtime. The total comes to $3,604 per unit, $14,416 total. Director Smith had suggested that I do a request for no more than, so I did a no more than $14,500 in case there's a couple dollars of incidental in there. So that is, that is our official request to the commission. Just some side notes, because I always like to tout the things that we do. I think you had mentioned that you saw our new ambulance. That was about eight or nine months in the works to get. We received it Monday. $114,000 is what the going rate for one of those are. Took a lot of time to secure the funding for that. The fire department itself responded to over 1,300 calls last year for a 100% volunteer department to be the busiest in Mon County. We responded to over 3,800 ambulance calls last year, which is 1,266 per truck. So we're a very, very busy organization. We always run second and I will one calls to Monty MS, and that relationship is stronger than it has ever been, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate your all's effort to allow us to be able to do this because we certainly wouldn't be able to with the financial constraints that we're under as a nonprofit, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask to put that on the unfinished business since we can't do it right now. Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to grants. Ms. Colleen Kuhn, how are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
Doing real well.
I have a request for reimbursement. The first one is the JJDP grant. It's Voices 2 program in the amount of $1,634.13. Another JJDP, this is DMC, in the amount of $3,479.33. And lastly, I have the Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $1,694.46.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you.
Okay, I see that the, we have a proclamation and also discussion, mini discussion of pedestrian safety initiative. Mr. Justice, Mr. Alsop, do you want to come down, or you want to do it now, or do you want to wait? Okay. I knew you were going to be delayed, so we can do it now if you'd like. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
You just say your name again and who you are. We know, but...
Yes, yes. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rob Alsop. I work with West Virginia University.
Good, that's what it's...
No, we are, yes. Thank you. Good. Hi, Rob. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rob. Well, thanks for having me. We have, so okay, I'll just give you a little bit of update of what we've been doing with the pedestrian safety initiative and sort of where we're going from here. Would that be, would that be okay?
Yes, please, go right ahead. You have, yeah, you have more than three minutes. It's not a public portion.
Okay, thank you. So as, as you are all aware, we had a fatality and a serious pedestrian industry injury both on our, both near our campus in early 2018. One was near Patterson Drive, just down from the rec center, and then the second, where there was a serious injury related to the crosswalk near the arboretum. Both those incidents were investigated and determined in those instances to be driver error. And in fact, I think there may have been some prosecutions in at least one of those moving forward. But nonetheless, it spurred a lot of debate and activity about what we needed to do to make our community and our campus safer, and that, you know, takes on any number of things that we need to do. And so, you know, there's a big responsibility of the university in communicating with our students and where we have things to where, you know, folks are going to walk, you know, you pour water on something, it's going to go to the least resistive place, and so there's a lot of thought about how you have to move through with that. But we also don't control the roadways adjacent to and through our campus, so it really takes some collaborative opportunities with the state and with the city and here today to talk a little bit about with the commission. So after those two incidents, we brought together a lot of the groups, MPO, MPD, UPD, City. We had experts from the university and Department of Highways really helped us lead the effort in which we tried to understand some goals, identify some problems, and then some top priorities that we could look at moving forward. And so, you know, big things that come to mind is what can we do to make sure that drivers obey crosswalks? And what can we do to make sure that our students are obeying crosswalks? And so, any number of things that take a very short period of time to things that can take two or three years. And so one of the things that has come up as sort of the longer term, but we caught it right, hopefully it comes up soon, is the lighting on Patterson Drive. And so that can take years, as you know, on the highways, plan to get things like that done. It was actually in process long before either of these two incidents, and so hopefully, within the next few months, we'll see that project restarted to move forward, going forward. But that's sort of an example of the long-term planning that needs to go on moving forward. There are some short-term things that we've already done, and so, for example, we, as part of our new student orientation and working with our students and communicating across our info boards all across campus, the needs to be safe and constantly reminding students that, you know, take the AirPods out, stop texting while you're walking around campus or through thoroughfares, just as an education matter, you know, the two incidents worked, student error, but certainly, kids and, you know, I've got a, I've got a freshman in high school that, you know, I can't tell when the AirPods are in or they're not, and so they need to pay attention. And so we've, we've taken it upon ourselves to really do and have a good educational component for our students moving forward and for the community. And so one of the things we've done, particularly at the beginning of semesters, whether it's working with MPD and UPD, is having those folks at the key crosswalks. We've moved signage, you know, sort of the flashing signs at the areas. You'll see when you enter a, when you would enter a construction area for highway purposes, there's a sign alongside the road, whether that's up at the rec center or key areas, having those signs flashing, just reminding cars that they need to stop. So those are some of the things, sort of quick things we could do versus long-term. And there's some intermediary things of, you know, flashing lights or thinking about whether stoplights should be concurrent or all four stop. Some of those things that we've been working through. So for a good part of last year, we did, I guess what I'd say, a lot of studying and implementation of the early stages. And I know the Department of Highways was working on, thinking through some initiatives that they could do as well. We had Donnie retired, and so anytime you go through a transition, folks need time to get up to speed and look at priorities. And as we all know, with the Department of Highways, there are lots of issues in addition to the pedestrian safety. And so one of the things that we, we want to keep pushing because we don't want to lose momentum, we want to, we want to keep engaged on the pedestrian safety issue is we also want our potholes fixed. We also want some of the upgrades for infrastructure that we're doing. And so they've got a balancing act they need to do to move forward. So, but nonetheless, last week, maybe week before last, we invited Commissioner Bloom to attend our core group meetings moving forward. I think there's another one coming forward.
Friday.
With really an opportunity, yeah, Friday to, I won't say restart, but to reinvigorate and make sure that some of the, the short-term projects we've had successes on, we continue, but that those medium and long-term projects continue to be the forefront of everybody's mind so that over the next coming months and years, as we do traffic things and we do get things on the planning process with the MPO, we start to accomplish some of these things. So it's really short, medium, and long-term. I think some of our faculty, you know, our police and highways have done a lot of the studying and came up with some good ideas. Now it's a matter of getting the parties back together and working on some implementation strategies. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions and love the County Commission's involvement as we work through and try to solve some of these challenges for our community.
I'll wait till the other side.
No, I appreciate you involving the commission because, again, this isn't a solution that, you know, anybody should have to work on alone, the university, the city. I live in that area, so I'm very familiar with, with the problems you have on that, that corner. It seems like you have two crosswalks, but you really need a third because you got everybody that parks in the park or that parking lot there and trying to get across to the CAC, and they're just not going to walk a quarter mile down the road to go across. So that's a, that's a tough nut to swallow. I think we've, have we addressed the issue whether the lights are on yet or not?
They are on.
I thought we had...
About seven, 80 percent, yeah, I think they're all on now.
I knew they'd been working on it, yes.
Fine, yeah, they, yes.
Apparently, they were ready to go, and then there was a wreck that hit one of the transport rivers, and that's what's caused some delays, so...
Gotcha.
We apologize for that, but I do appreciate your efforts. I try, I go to the rec center a lot and try to be extra careful. As I'm, in one time out of 10, when I just take that extra look, there's a student there. So they don't, unfortunately, they don't pay attention as much as they should. I was at the other intersection by the arboretum, and the car had to right away, they were turning up to the CAC, and a student walked right in front of this person. Luckily, he got out of the way, but they're not always paying attention, so...
I think if we work together, sort of big scale, some planning perspectives, we can do some good long-term for the community, and that's, you know, whether it's, you know, whether we can even get a solution for Grumman's Island in front of the mountain there. I mean, that's sort of, you know, two, two, you know, that's, that will take a creative solution. But, you know, if you think about how we could work together to solve some of those issues, it could be really cool for our community.
And from our involvement with the MMPO, yes, we're, we're in these planning things that are 20, 30 years down the road. But again, I'm glad that you're also taking a very short-term look at it, putting the temporary lighting there just to, again, just increase awareness. So I appreciate everything you guys have done so far.
Appreciate it. I really do echo Sean's comments. I think to myself, growing up here, who would ever have thought that this would have been a problem back in the 50s when the med center started to be constructed, back when development started in this area? So this, even though it's a effort on all our parts, I think you should be commended. Thank you.
I appreciate it. We, we should have moved quicker. I think there's been a lot of good work done, and we need to continue that momentum. And with you guys hopefully joining in and helping in, we'll be able to expedite some things, so...
And for clarification, even a year, because I lived right off there, off of Baldwin for a year while I was building my house, two years ago, there was another fatality there, you know, that, and again, it was, you drive through there in 3, 4 in the morning, and it was very dark. So the lighting is probably the biggest thing, but it is a very dangerous area. And, you know, the, the students that attend your university, our university, are, are the lifeline of this community, and we need to... They're not always paying attention. We have to be a little bit more vigilant for them.
And we need to continually remind them to...
Yeah, I want to say a couple really positive things. First, I want to thank Ron Justice because he called me, and the word I like reinvigorate is a good way to say, we had this real large group of 60 people. In fact, it was really uncontrollable at one point, but Donnie Williams came up with the idea of that bucket list, and I did not realize, and I'd share with the commissioners, this where you took 600 easily ideas and broke them down into three areas. So there was a lot of legwork going on that we didn't realize. But now I think, you know, I want to get it very clear, there's actually two groups. There's the MMPO, and I think the people need to understand that. That is looking at long-term bike and pedestrian areas. But this is a separate, that WVU is kind of initiated and we're part of, and I think it's very important. And Donnie Williams, one of the things I'm hoping to do, and I'm going to ask on Friday, is if we send a letter to the Secretary of Transportation to ask that Donnie continue his role in this area because to get Darby up to shape, it's very difficult, and this is something that Donnie wants to do, and I think it would be really helpful. The second thing is, there was a meeting last night, and it was extremely well, where they were getting a lot of input and student input, and I noticed that you're now going to put it, the WVU Student Administration, which is always a lot easier to get the word out through the students, through them, and I appreciate that. The third thing I do want to say is, in looking at this proposed action plan and the first two items within six months, what I am going to ask, and that's what I'm going to ask on Friday, is we have been talking about a pilot project to do something within 60, 90 days. And Ron, that's what I'm talking about, a couple, one or two or three of the areas, to choose one of the areas to try and do something. And I think it's what is important is we try it. If it works or not, at least then we learn from it. And I think if we show the public that we are actually doing that, then, you know, we'll move forward. And unfortunately, it's cost, and what we learned was, and I did not realize, that the federal grants do not really look as pedestrian safety in grants, but if we could look at like fixing expanding roads, when you do that, then you could do that at the same time. So again, I do appreciate it. I want to end with this, something that we need to look at. We were talking about areas that where there's a problem now, and I know, and I'm glad the sheriff is here because I know he's going to be dealing with this problem. When you build that new parking garage in Valley View, Valley View Drive, right, that's the, the one that comes down, we're going to be putting possibly 800 cars on a road that has no sidewalk, that has 1,000 students coming up and down. What we need to try and do is prepare before that is built, or if not, we have serious problems. And we did submit that yesterday, but I think it's something we, the university, the city, the county, is going to have to look at with the DOT. I know the DOT doesn't want to deal with it, but if they're allowing this, they have to be responsible. That is an area that I'm very, very concerned about, and I know you would too. And it's something that I like to be proactive, and it's something that we're going to look at, and that would be one other area. I hate to say long-term, but come up with some idea. I know they want to pave it, but what could pave it if there's no sidewalk and you saw how the water lays on it and so on. So it's just something that we need to...
But even when we had the discussion, when they came in and talked to us about the possibility of, of building that, we raised it to the MMPO director that, listen, now that you have this, this should highlight, this should heighten the priority on doing something with that street.
And we're happy to work with you on that initiative. We agree completely that it would be great to get that upgraded as we're doing something that we think is, is...
And we could do it at the same time, then wait two, three years, which sometimes the DOT likes to do and see what happens first.
No, I understand.
But yeah, that's something I think would be very important for us, and it's in the county, you know, and it's a catch 22 now. I jokingly said to them, well, the city, one of the city residents said, well, it's not, it's only in the county. I said, well, we can always put the sheriff there and block off the road for a day and have all the cars go through the city, and then you'd understand our concern. But everyone needs to be aware of it. It's a city, county, WVU concern, and that's what we're going to look at. But I appreciate it, and Ron, I really appreciate it. I know we're meeting Friday again, and there's bucket lists, and we'll move forward on it, and I'm very excited about it. I appreciate that.
Thank you guys for the opportunity.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything about...
Just one addition, that tonight, the MPO Director Bill Austin and one of our staff members will be going to student government association meeting to interact with them as far as in this planning process. So there's dialogue going on at all levels, and their input is very important as well. So we appreciate Bill and his staff going to the meeting tonight and getting that input as well, so...
And we have a proclamation that you all had asked us to be counting a part of it. Do we want to wait till next week, or... Yeah, so we'll do it next, so we had the discussion this week, so if anybody wants to come and support, support it, well, allow that.
We'll have someone here next week as well.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks again.
Appreciate you taking time. Okay, move them forward. We have correspondence, letter of support sent to the West Virginia Division of Public Transit for Mountain Line Transit's New Fit Medical Transportation Service. If you want to just explain why we put that on the agenda?
It's, due to the time constraints, they had to have it on the 31st, so, I mean, I can read it into the record if you like.
Yes, I would, please.
"With the recent closure of our community's non-emergency medical transport provider in August 2018, Montague County has experienced a crisis situation. Our county has lacked the necessary providers to offer such critical transportation services. County Commission has received numerous calls related to this issue. Because of the seriousness of the issue, the County Commission got involved to find an alternative solution. After exploring a couple of different options, it became clear that no entity was equipped to start such a service immediately. Mountain Line Transit understood the gravity of the situation, offered to provide four hours of service per day for individuals who needed accessible transportation, as well as for individuals who have Medicare or other private insurances. Working off the four hours, additional local funding was secured to include another four hours of service, totaling eight hours of service per day for the next year. County Commission fully supports Mountain Line Transit's New Fit Medical Transportation Service and hopes additional funding will be secured to provide this vital service for years to come. Please feel free to contact me if you have any good questions."
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, request by Judge Clodges for the use of courtroom number one in the Mon County Justice Center for teaching a forensics class in March and April, and to make arrangements for parking to be available on the back parking deck.
That's pretty much it?
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any other correspondence?
Uh, just one item came in. It was... Uh, just one item came in, um, it was forwarded to us by Susan Riddle from the CVB. Um, it's a copy of the resolution that the Mylan Park Foundation Board of Directors issued in support of the need to improve the roads in Montague County. So, it's here on, in file with-
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, going to unfinished business. I would like to bring up the Star City situation, since we've talked about it several times. So, it would be considered unfinished business and how you wanted to deal with it, because we did talk about-
Oh, you're talking about the funding-
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm talking about Star City, yeah, sorry.
What's wrong with Star City?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had previously, uh, on multiple times, we'd said that we would, we would fund the nonprofits that were participating in the, um, the EMS, uh, program, the, with the CAD assistant, uh, uh, call. So, we had approved that, uh, it would be my recommendation, we put it, we, we put it as a budget request for next meeting for approval.
Great. And you wouldn't have to show up if, I mean, you can if you want, but-
My only question would be how the, um, are you going to buy the equipment and ask for reimbursement, or?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And I believe the, the plan now, and then working with, with Pat on that, some of our stuff is already, will go directly under them. So, they'll invoice us, and we could just in turn invoice directly back to you and just keep the chain correct, so that the, the path is right. So, that's, that's what we've talked about doing if it was approved.
May I ask the time parameter on this?
Uh, Pat, do you have a? It's, we're really at their, at the company's mercy, with, with a lot of that. We're ready to do that, I mean, we could do it today, we could have done it months ago. We'd have to take, you know-
When we had the situation before, it, it kept-
Right, right. So, I, I know that they've done, Monty Mess has done their part.
Okay.
Yeah, the CAD vendor went back as the one, but we're-
So, it's just a matter of when the CAD vendor gets it, then it will be implemented as soon as possible.
Everything else is there, we're, we're ready to move forward.
I mean, we have about a week turnaround time on checks, so if, if you need anything, just as long as you know that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you would just forward that on to Renetta and we'll, we'll get it processed.
Good. And we'll put that on, thank you very much. New business, to consider motion of Rick Sebastian as administrator of the estate of Hannah M. Sebastian for appointment of a committee for Gary Allen Richmond, an incarcerated person.
And, uh, county's legal counsel is here to address that.
Could, good, could, Mr. Maga, could you come up and enlighten us with Cliff Notes first?
I, I don't know if the sheriff's been made aware of this, but, but there's been a lawsuit filed in the Circuit Court of Montague County against the, uh, Gary Richmond, who is in fact a incarcerated convict. And he's incarcerated for a period beyond one year. So, under legal contemplation, he is in fact a, uh, an individual who's under a legal disability. And, uh, the plaintiff has requested, um, and filed a motion to have the sheriff appointed as the, uh, conservator, or, I'm sorry, the committee for this individual. It's my recommendation, and I've already talked to plaintiff's counsel. Uh, I, I told him that I was going to direct the commission to refuse at this point in time the request. And he is going to in turn, uh, file a motion before Judge Clodges. And ultimately, the sheriff will in fact be appointed as the committee for this incarcerated convict.
Okay, I'm a little confused of why we would refuse if that's what is going to end up happening anyhow.
You need the judge to do it.
I, I, I was just going to have the judge do it, as opposed to, uh, avoiding any hard feelings between the commission and, and the sheriff. Because, uh, without talking to the sheriff, I'm sure he's probably going to say, "Why am I going to get appointed?" And ultimately, I, I, uh, talked to Renetta and said that, again, he, there's going to be, uh, a judgment rendered against this individual. And, uh, as I told Renetta, uh, this individual has nothing more to do and he probably won't be happy with the amount of money that he might be paying. And, uh, the next step would be to file a, a civil action against the sheriff in the county.
So, it's going to end up in litigation at some point?
It's, it's all going to be in litigation. So, my, 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 my thoughts were, let the judge order that, if he wants to, and he will, uh, order that the sheriff be the committee for this incarcerated convict.
Okay, so, uh, it'd be, I motion that we accept our legal counsel's advice and, and reject the motion.
Second.
Poppy moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Is there any other new business?
No.
Okay, uh, Ed? Oh, wait, wait, sorry, wait, 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 elected officials. Is there any report from elected officials since I see?
I would just like to, um, make a brief comment. We unveiled our OpenGov, um, platform website, uh, updated website on Friday. Well, we started on Friday, but it actually ended up happening on Monday because of the inclement weather. But I would like to report that on Friday, our office, um, received an email, a FOIA request for some employee data. Uh, one of the list of employees, salaries, positions, bonuses, overtime, very extensive list, from a group named Ameri- um, American Transparency, I believe. They're out of Boca Raton, Florida. And they manage a webpage called openthebooks.com. And so, they, they had sent this information request to all fifty-five West Virginia counties. And they've done this all over the nation to put together information, transparency information. And so, I replied to him, we had this website, I sent him the link. And he replied back that, um, "The website you directed me to contained all the requested data and I was able to download a file that will suffice, thank you."
Great.
So, it saved, in, in that one-
Yeah.
-instance, it saved our office a considerable amount of time in putting together all of the data that they are rightfully entitled to get. But now, it's out there, so that all they need to do is, is have access to it, so.
Great, thank you for sharing that, Carrie.
Yes.
Just for clarity, the site was open, I, we came in on Friday and we did open up the site on, on, on Friday. So, it's been out there, I forwarded to a couple of people to, um, you know, to, to go in and look around. And I encourage the public to go in and look around, but anyhow, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, no, thank you. No, I was just, that's just great news. Okay, is there anyone else who would like, okay, you've, um, okay, we'll have reports, Ed?
Well, first of all, uh, I agree with what's been presented to us by public comment. The issue, I know that commission did have a, a great hand in, you know, the formation of Longview. The omission, however, of any concrete agreements that did not arise, uh, for upkeep, upgrade. And I know it wasn't thought that this road was going to receive that heavy use, and unfortunately, it did. We take your comments to heart. Uh, obviously, you know our position, uh, with regards to roads. We can and will try and work and intercede, but we can't promise you anything.
So, is there anybody that you can go to, these signs and information, I mean, anybody to write to in the state? Anybody that, you know, at all that can help us?
Well, we do have a new district supervisor. I don't even know that he is actually that fully aware of the situation, uh, you know, since he's new. He doesn't live in the area. So, we will try and make him apprised of this and try and see what we can re- I don't, I can't promise a resolution here, because, again, it is a road.
Somebody's going to get killed, and that's the sad part of it.
I understand your, we understand your concerns.
I mean, I know, I know, but I mean, that's, that's the sad part of it.
It's not, I don't want you to think you're falling on deaf ears, okay, but, so.
If I can tell you, I've submitted it four times, that road. So, they are aware of it, we've done everything legally possible that we could do. And we've, we've tried, and I just want to clarify, you know, and they're aware of it. But, that's all we can do at this time. Okay?
Appreciate that.
Sure.
I pursuant to our work session, uh, last week, on Monday, I did meet with Steve Bonamo. And he's the dean of extension, also Brent Clark, who's the, the 4-H leader in the state. And this was just simply to begin discussions on the possibility of programming that we will have in the new 4-H and extension center, which, uh, I'd like to say also. If you didn't see the picture, we do have steel that's going up right now. So, you will start to see some, uh, more progress. That evening, then I had monthly 4-H leaders meeting, in which I apprised above that. Yesterday, we did meet at Mylan Park regarding the finances of the, uh, the new 4-H and extension center. And again, very happy to, to see that progress. I will represent commission Saturday on the WVU Children's Hospital Ball. I do plan to attend. And looking forward to Sunday through Tuesday for our county association meeting. And hopefully, to get the emphasis, truthfully, back on the roads and the road caucus. I know that things that are going on at the state level, uh, have drawn away, I think, the attention that we need to direct, uh, back to the roads specifically, to this, you know, this particular region, north central West Virginia, and in Charleston. I also hope to, uh, attend the Farm Bureau Taste of West Virginia. They're going to be there at the same time, that will be there for our meeting, so that's what I have.
Thank you.
Okay. It's, it's been a busy week, week and a half. Last Thursday, I had my, um, uh, Health Department Board of Health meeting. And I'm pleased to report that, uh, everything is, uh, I'm very happy with the report I received from the Board of Health. Everything seems to be really moving ahead. The one thing that really sticks out to me is the Smile Program, since it came into existence last fall. They've served over three hundred kids that wouldn't have otherwise received dental care during that period. And that just, uh, um, that in itself is a major accomplishment. I mean, that's a game changer for some of these kids. We had an OpenGov conference call, as we got ready to do our launch on Friday, also on Thursday. And then, um, in the evening, I had a, a Department of Energy Science Bowl competition. Every year, I, I contribute my time to, uh, support the Science Bowl competition, which is, um, this coming weekend. Friday, again, we had the open, we, we had the snow, but we had the OpenGov launch. And I appreciate, uh, our IT staff being available to call, even though they were off that day. Uh, they needed to get the, the website set up, and I appreciate them, uh, working with me, especially Derek. This week, we had the, um, had a meeting with the Morgantown Industrial Park Access Working Group, for lack of a better term. Um, we're, we're still working on ways to get the, um, a, a study funded in regards to access to the park. That's kind of the first step before we even see if there's a fee, if there's a feasible way to do that. We need to get the study done, and that's, that's what's needed. It needs to be done sooner rather than later, so we've, we talked about some creative financing options, which I'll share with the commission in, in the coming week. In addition, um, I thank Ben Conley, he met with me to, uh, for me to kind of show him around, um, OpenGov and show him the changes. We did launch in August, but we immediately didn't need, decided that we needed an upgrade, because you can be transparent and throw a bunch of information out there. But if, we need it to be more user-friendly and more intuitive, and that's what we did with this upgrade. And I think people will really, really find out that, uh, you know, we did a good job with that. So, I appreciate everybody's help with that process, especially, uh, Carrie, your staff. Tanya, it, it did, did a majority of the lifting in regards to working with the vendor and getting them the in- information and validating the information, and, and we couldn't have done it without her. As Commissioner Hawkins mentioned, we had an extension building finance meeting, uh, yesterday. This morning, I had our bi-weekly meeting with our IT team. Thursday, I have a red team meeting, um, a meeting with the assessor, uh, and a, um, meeting with a couple of Development Authority of Executive Committee members to talk about, uh, a grant process in, in regards to the industrial, uh, uh, park access. Uh, we're, we're, we're going to, with next week's Development Authority meeting, we're going, we've got a couple of grants identified that, uh, we could assist with. And Friday, as I mentioned, I have, uh, Friday and Saturday, I have our Science Bowl competition.
Did you study for it?
I'll tell you what, if, if you have free time, it's at the mountain layer. I appreciate West Virginia University making the mountain layer available. The middle school competition is humbling. If you go Friday, the middle schools competition, just sit in on a couple rounds of these students. I mean, it is amazing. And in my twenty years of supporting Science Bowl, I think I've been able to answer a question about four times before the students answered. I mean, it's really, these kids are, you don't even have time to take in the questions being asked, and they're already answering it. It's amazing. And then, that's the middle school competition. Saturday, you have the high school competition, and that's, that's a exponentially of a, a level far, far greater. So, it's, it's really impressive, it's the, you know, it makes you really feel good about the quality of education in this state, specifically this county, because, uh, this county has owned that competition, both on a middle school and high school level. Ma'am, I really appreciate you coming in and sharing your, your, your information with us. It doesn't fall on deaf ears. I believe we have a meeting with, uh, some of the representatives from Longview next week. And I think that'd be a good opportunity to, again, show them, listen, you're not being a good community partner here. It wasn't anticipated these roads would ever be used. There's, the coal was supposed to come through the belt, but nobody anticipated the coal mine would close. So, uh, it is an issue that's been kind of thrust on the residents of that area, and we do appreciate that. One of the things that, um, our administrator mentioned, that when we talk to, when we talk to the owners of Longview, we can mention that, you know, um, we, we may take this farther to the EPA or the DEP, but that might be a-
I already submitted everything to the DPA, they have the exact same pictures and complaints from, from several of the residents.
State or federal?
Uh, most, probably the state, it's, they're looking at the felony.
I don't know, but it's always been my, I, I, it doesn't sound, it sounds ox- oxymoron, but I've always had better luck with federal.
Oh, now you said EPA, right?
EPA or depart- yes.
Yeah, we went to the, uh, DEP, Department of, uh-
Environmental Protection.
Environmental Protection, so.
Yeah.
So, but that's also something that, again, we, we, we'll, we'll try to at least mention it, that, hey, and I don't know who's going to be in that meeting and how much pool they have, but listen, we're getting a lot of reports about your, your participation in that area. And I go, again, it wasn't, it wasn't something that was planned, but they really need to be a better community partner in your area. So, we, it doesn't fall on deaf ears. Thank you to Star City for, uh, the service that you guys provide to county and your participation in this, in this, um, project moving forward to get, uh, the, the closest available ambulances available, you know, to, to incidents when they occur. And buying this equipment or installing this equipment and being part of that is a, a big step. And the last thing, Tom, I noticed that, uh, you know, part of our group's going to Charleston to, uh, next week. But as, as you're, as a chair of the Road Caucus Committee, and I saw that Samantha was appointed as co-chair-
Yes.
Which is great, it's better to have more voices than less. But I really, being halfway through the legislative slash, legislation session, I haven't heard very much about what, what they're doing, going to do. We went down there, we got, you know, we did a very good job of present, presenting our case. We got a little bit of lip service, but we haven't heard anything since. So, if, if, on behalf of the Road Caucus, if you guys would ask for a follow-up from our legislative group-
Sure.
That's, that told us, and we're in Charleston, that they formed their own group and they were moving forward. But I don't know, I haven't heard anything about what they're doing. Uh, again, we need to be part of that conversation, and we're willing to be part of that conversation. If, uh, so I'd, I requested it, if, if you could ask for access, or ask for an update.
Okay. In fact, I, I won't be going down there, that's why, um, Preston County asked me, and I thought it was a great idea. And the more voices to be heard down there, and they're going to ask, and they're also going to have a meeting of our North Central Caucus Commissioners Group to just talk and see where at-
And I will be, I will be there.
Yes, I appreciate if you would move that forward. Yeah, that's definitely, uh, a situation. The second thing I would like to ask is, um, if you would allow us to write a letter to Tom Smith asking that we keep, um, Donnie Williams involved with our situation that's been going on with not only the roads, but also the road safety, because I believe it would be important to have that letter sent. Because he was told he was going to be, yeah, he was told he was going to be, and just looking, we need to expedite that. Supposedly, he was going to get twenty hours or up to twenty thousand dollars. And there's been a holdup for whatever reason, but we need to expedite that.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, great, so we'll do that. Uh, due to the federal shutdown, there was a major drain on the food banks in our community in Preston County. And I just want to make the people aware that the Dominion Post is, is having a place where the, the rotary clubs from- is having a place where the, the Rotary Clubs from Mon County and Preston County will be collecting food at the Dominion Post on Saturday and it's just to restock many of the, uh, pantries, so I'm real appreciative of that. Um, also, I'm excited to say that, well, let me add that the Star City, I want to thank you because during that time of in touch and concern and the three months of, we didn't know where we were going to get any, where you came through and people do not know that they volunteered their services, they provided, especially several people who had to get there for, um, kidney dialysis and they did that on their own. So, I believe this is one way of rewarding you and thanking you because you, you're a part of the community, so I wanted the public to know that you were doing that anyway, so we just wanted to thank you for that. And finally, I'm thrilled to announce on Tuesday, the 12th, at 9:30, the Pantry Plus More will be opening up our 11th School Pantry at Mount near Middle. So, that will be 11 pantries now that are opened, so that is great news. Um, oh, I also want to say that it is also being opened because Elias Hishma, who everyone knows from Alibaba, this, he's providing the funds and this is the third pantry that he has provided funds for, so we're very appreciative of that. With that, do we have...
Move to adjourn.
Probably moved and second.